Through the minutes for Tuesday, October 15th, 2024, as presented.
Second.
Okay. Motion's been made in second. Is there any corrections or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move we go to executive session for reason number one, to discuss the reputation, character, physical condition, or mental health rather than professional competence of an individual, or to discuss the discipline or dismissal of, or complaints or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member, or an individual and return to open session.
Second.
Okay. Roll call vote. Mark?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Bob, yes. Will we convene at 7:00 PM for a regular meeting? And I'll go to the county.
Recording stopped.
Seven o'clock?
Recording in progress.
I'll make a motion to return to open session.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to return to open session.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. It's a time to publicly address the board on any item listed on the media agenda or any issue or matter of the town. If you intend on addressing the board at this time, we ask you do the following. Please identify yourself by name, address, or the company/institution you represent. The public address to the board segment will last no longer than 30 minutes. Each individual will be given three minutes. Please make your comments concise and try not to repeat statements made by others. Please address your comments to the board chair. Discussion or debate on any issue may not take place at this time. The chair or the designee may answer questions on procedural matters. Please be cordial and respectful of others. If anyone wishes to be recognized when the board discusses an agenda item, please make that request at this time. The board chair will grant this request. Address comments to the board chair and be concise. Does anyone want to address any items on the agenda at this point? Yes, ma'am?
Yes, my name is Amy Bisanti. I live on Cleveland Grove. And this is with regards to, I'll just read the letter and then I'll submit it. Dear honorable members of the Dalton Select Board and Town Manager, I received your certified letter of notice of taking by eminent domain on my farm land along Porture Road and Pizzab. I'm shocked that you would take this step without discussing it with me personally. First of all, your proposed easement would occur on land with a state agricultural preservation restriction, an APR restriction. This makes granting the easement infinitely more complex than simply signing an amendment domain taking. There is no way that I can legally grant that easement without the approval of the Massachusetts Department of Agriculture's APR program. And in fact, APR land is protected in perpetuity by state law. And the land, quote, "from the regs shall not be used for another purpose or disposed of without a two-thirds road call of both houses and levels." Your request of easement is a change of use. So I'm surprised that you have not reached out to Mdar, as you have been dealing with that extensively with regards to the garden APR. And I spoke with them today. They still have not heard from you guys. Secondly, my field is protected. My field has three protected and efficiently delineated wetlands on it. And your project appears to be within the buffer zone of the hydrologic connection of the largest delineated wetland in the center of the field. Facilitating any movement and drainage of water in that hydrological connection has the potential to impact a protected wetland, and that would be a violation of the Massachusetts Wetland Protection Act. Finally, given that the Commonwealth of Massachusetts requires a border notification for any wetland impacting projects, I do not understand why me, as the landowner, was not notified in that process. So I'm happy to submit this for the minutes.
Yeah, through still. We'll have to put this on an agenda item.
Well, first of all, time should see it.
Yeah.
And perhaps he can remediate some of these issues before we have to put it on the agenda. But we may have to put it on the agenda.
We'll put it on a future agenda.
Yeah.
Will I be outside of that?
Absolutely. Thank you. Anyone else? Henry?
Henry Rose, North Mountain Road. I have a comment about having a special election to fill Joe Digger's vacated spot on the select board. The more people that you have on the board, the more chance for interaction with the public. It's more democratic. And the issues you're going to be discussing, like whether or not we have an expensive police station, these are complex issues that require multiple minds, different backgrounds. So I'm all in favor of having a special election. And it should be soon. It shouldn't be like waiting. And if there's only one person who wants to run, is there a way that you can just have that person be on board instead of the cost of the election?
No, that's not going to happen. Okay. Anyone else? Brenda?
Brenda Dassett, 66 Judith. I also am part owner in Dr. Leges, which is on Dalton Division. And I may, depending on the discussion that happens, I have some questions with regard to said intersection changes, whether they be a rotary, or stoplights, or so on and so forth, because I happened to find out via Facebook that this was even something that was happening. So I'm interested in what discussions are going to happen and how that affects possibly the property that my business sits on. And any questions that may come up, I may have some questions for the board, should they affect me in any way, I guess, at this point, in going forward. So, thank you.
Tom?
Hey, Tom Ballard, 8400 North Street. Just wanted to steal some thunder from the town manager. October 31st, my wife and I had the closing on the garden property. So by now the town should have their money and also taxes paid up to you.
Thank you. Congratulations. Okay. Anyone else? Yes?
I'm basically here exactly as Brenda is. I'm Jim Underdown. I also own the other portion of Bergman's Market. I think where the property will get taken from, from the article that I just happened to read Friday for the first time. So again, same thing that I'd like to hear a little more about that later on.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? One once, one twice. Okay. Appointment ratifications. Mr. Hutchinson?
Yes. First, I'd like to recommend Tristan Manzolini as part-time assessor's clerk. We were expecting her here tonight. I'm not sure why she couldn't make it. But she was one of several candidates who were interviewed who we feel is the best qualified for the position. She's not yet had her pre-employment physical or drug screen, so I'm recommending that she be an assessor's clerk pending the outcome of those.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend we appoint Tristan Manzolini as part-time assessor's clerk effective November 18th, 2024, pending outcome of pre-employment, physical, and drug screening.
Second.
Okay. Motion's been made in second.
Go ahead, John. Tom, is this position, part-time assessor's clerk, a member of the three-person assessor's board?
After six months, the person in this position is expected to have completed the assessor's course 101, and therefore be eligible to be appointed as an assessor. That would bring the hours up from 16 per week to 20 per week, making it a benefited position. And so it's a great incentive for the person to fulfill that expectation.
So...
So, yes.
So things get lost in the shuffle here with the assessor's board. So now there's only two assessors that are certified?
Yes.
On a three-member board?
Yes. So we expect this person to be qualified in six months.
Did you tell us, I mean, there's a chairman of the board of assessors or a leading assessor as basically a full-time employee. Who does that know?
The principal assessor...
Principal assessor.
Is only working four hours per week at this point. She has tremendous experience and is helping our current assessor's clerk and second assessor with, you know, and any questions that he has, including working on setting the tax rate. So we very much hope that this person can take over as much of the clerical work as possible, as quickly as possible, and in the hope that we can work towards bringing back some of the functions that we're now hiring out to our contractor, who does assessing work, especially building inspections. That's slated to happen next year. And we hope to bring as many of those functions back in-house as possible by the time that our next three-year contract is over. It's a long-term process. There's a lot to learn in being an assessor. It does take years to get the knowledge and the experience to be able to do the job well.
Okay. Thank you for that update.
Okay. All right. Motion's been made in second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Tom?
And also very pleased to bring Paul Tabone to your attention as a candidate for the traffic commission. This is a volunteer position, of course, and we're always glad to have people going to volunteer on our committees. And we thank you very much for your interest in that.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend we appoint Paul Tabone to the traffic commission effective November 13th, 2024, through June 30th, 2025.
Second.
Okay. Motion's been made in second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Maybe Mr. Tabone would like to say something.
Yeah. Paul, would you like to say anything?
I have nothing in particular, but I look forward to working with the commission. I've been a community person in my previous life on Ohio. I've been in the Lions Club for 35, 40 years. I've lost track of that. And I just feel it's time to stick my finger in the pot and do what I can for the community. And I see it as a positive thing for everybody, myself included, and my wife, Deb.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Debbie?
Okay. Motion to open this license board, please.
Make a motion to open this licensing board.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Mr. Hutchinson?
I'd like to turn this over to my executive assistant, who handles licensing and permitting for the town.
So you had previously approved this transfer application from Shire Brew House to Berkshire Culinary Group. Between the new owners and the previous owners, they had decided to pull their application back and add a pledge agreement to this application. So purchase will be contingent on whether they get this license or not. So that's the only change in this.
In other words, you're asking for authorization from this board to pledge this license as collateral for a loan?
They will not be purchasing it unless they get this license.
Yeah, but then they're going to pledge the license as collateral for a loan.
Yes.
That's what we're authorizing here, if we authorize that. Right?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion...
Well, I don't need to take this.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the amended transfer application from Shire Brew House LLC to Berkshire Culinary Group LLC, doing business as Shire Beer Hall, as presented.
Second.
Okay. Motion's been made in second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Make a motion to close this licensing board.
Is there a second on that?
Oh, second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now, Dalton Division Road Project, discussing the Fuss and O'Neil.
We have Steve Severia on the...
Steve, can you hear us?
I can hear you.
Okay. I am going to face you to the board.
Steve, can you hear us?
I can hear you. Thank you.
Okay. John Boyle, Chairman Bob Bishop, Member Mark Schout.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm sure you remember, we were last year, for the record, I'm Steve Severia. I'm the project manager for the town's design consultant, Fuss and O'Neil, on the Dalton Division Road Project. This project is under design and permitting responsibility of the town for the application of state and federal funding for construction that will be administered by Mass DOT. And as part of that process, we are currently in the development of the plans for the project very early on, at this stage of conceptual design. And we are required to follow the Mass DOT project development process through all the various stages of design, where it gets reviewed and commented on. And then we also have all of the environmental permitting and other permits that have to be applied for and obtained prior to advertisement for construction. And another big component of this process is the acquisition of any rights over private property that need to be acquired in order to construct a project, both permanent fee takings and temporary easements for construction. We were last, before this board, about a year ago, presenting pretty much the same alternatives I have to describe to you tonight. And at that time, we were directed to kind of pause the project development process in order to have further participation by the city of Pittsfield. Because, as you know, this project is kind of unique in that the entire roadway is within the town of Dalton, but all of the abutting properties along the west side of it are in the city of Pittsfield. And so there will be impacts of those properties. Those property owners will be stakeholders in this project and will be affected by it, impacted by it. And I know Mass DOT is very much in favor of having participation by the city of Pittsfield, both its officials and residents in kind of the development of this project. And so the next step for us is to actually schedule a public information session as part of the public outreach on the project that will, the abutters in the city of Pittsfield will be invited to be updated on the status of the alternatives that we're looking at, similar to what we're presenting here tonight, and to be given the opportunity to comment. So we really have two areas of kind of decision-making that we're looking at tonight. And I'm just wondering if I can share my screen. Is that possible?
Yes. Go ahead and try it now.
I'm trying to find it now. Share. And it's... This one. Can anybody see this plan?
Nope. It's you.
Oh, hang on. I didn't push the right button. Okay. There we are. Okay. So we have two kind of areas of conceptual design decisions to be made. One regards the intersection of Dalton Division Road and William Street in Pittsfield. And we really have two alternatives under consideration. One, and the process that we go through with Mass DOT is called intersection control evaluation. And that's what we've kind of, we started last year. We've been, we moved into stage two of it this year, where when you have an intersection on the project, Mass DOT wants a decision over the type of control to be implemented, to be based on considerations, especially of safety of both vehicular and non-vehicular users, especially vulnerable roadway users such as cyclists and pedestrians. And for a facility such as this, there's really only three alternatives that we even consider. One is a traffic signal control. And in this case, the amount of traffic using these intersections, this intersection, does not meet the warrants that would make it worth the expenditure for a traffic signal to have on the operation, to improve the operation of the intersection. And so we discounted that, the traffic signalization option. So the two options that we're left with is two-way stop control, which is essentially what exists there today, and a modern roundabout, which Mass DOT requires to be considered as an alternative, especially because of the safety advantages of the roundabout. And so we have this option as the kind of two-way stop, conventional stop sign control, very similar to what's there today. And then the second option is for the modern roundabout, which has the advantages of fewer conflicts, lower speed operation, single direction of flow, and a much higher level of safety. In stage two of the ICE process, we've evaluated kind of how much the potential for crashes will be reduced by our proposed alternative. And the roundabout has a reduction factor, about half of what the two-way stop would be. So it would be expected to have only half as, the potential for only half as many crashes there as the two-way stop. The one large factor in the decision on this roundabout alternative is the fact that, if you can see these, the property lines of the property on the corner, I guess where Shire Donuts is now, this shaded area is private property that they own. And the limits of our construction will not encroach on their actual parking area. There's like a large grassed area on the corner here. But there would be...
You're over there.
...a requirement for a fee-taking of their property in order to construct this alternative. It's a pretty good-sized lot. It's probably two or three acres. This area is about 6,000 square feet, so maybe less than 5% of the total lot area. Another thing to note is that the existing roadway actually encroaches on their property already. And so that's something that would have to be rectified either way. So those are the two intersection alternatives. It would be tough for us to convince Mass DOT that the two-way stop is preferable, just from the standpoint of a much greater level of safety for this one. They both cost about the same, with the exception of the cost of the acquisition of the land. And so with a much greater level of safety for the roundabout, that really points to this as the preferred alternative, at least from the Mass DOT point of view. The other area of...
Let's see this.
...design alternatives that we're looking at have to do with the...
Want to watch the design thing? Sorry, Steve.
Sorry.
The chairman of the traffic commission just walked in, and we feel he should be involved in this process.
Absolutely.
Come on over here. He just said that... Three alternatives here, a roundabout, just basically keep the same design, and three traffic lights. And DOT strongly recommends the roundabout for safety reasons.
This for the end of William Street?
Yeah.
William Street?
Hubbard Avenue.
Dalton Vision? Or is this Hubbard?
No, no. Dalton Division.
Dalton Vision?
Yeah.
The south end is, yeah. The traffic commission's come out in favor of the roundabout on that. And only because of the, primarily because of the way the streets are configured in that area, to try to make T-intersection, once was a T-intersection. They had more accidents than they have now. And they already have a bunch of accidents. The calming that takes place is important.
Steve's... Can you get Steve back?
Yep, I'm here. I'm here.
I think, Steve, you can move on here.
Yeah, you can move on. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yep.
Okay, thanks. So the other area of kind of alternatives to be considered is for the corridor itself, for Dalton Division Road itself, the entire length of it. And we have essentially three alternatives for the cross-section of Dalton Division Road. Now, Mass DOT has a policy called the Healthy Transportation Initiative that they've had for several years, which requires that we provide for pedestrian facilities on these corridors, and also for bicycle facilities. So we have to provide for bicycle and pedestrian travel in some form. And when we have sidewalks as a pedestrian facility, what their policy calls for is sidewalks on both sides of the road. And where we have bicycle facilities, there are essentially two alternatives. There's bicycle lanes on the roadway, which have to be buffered. They have to have a separate area that's in between the bicycle lane and the vehicle travel lane. That's usually just marked off with hatch pavement markings, just to have, to achieve some separation between bicycle lanes and vehicles. And when we first started putting bike lanes on roadways, we didn't have that buffer, but it's now seen as essential and is required whenever we have bike lanes on the street. And so this first alternative is the one that has bicycle lanes on both sides with the buffer and sidewalks on both sides. The second alternative would be to have, to eliminate the sidewalk on one side and to have a 10-foot shared-use path. And now this would be the west side of Dalton Division Road. And the reason why we kind of want to shift things over to the west side is because the east side has a lot more topography, steep slopes, wetland resource areas, and a lot of things that will require a lot more construction in order to mitigate impacts to those areas. So we have one alternative that shows, and so what we can do is we can combine the bicycle and the pedestrian facility into a shared-use path that's wide enough to be used by both modes. That is required to be offset from the roadway, so it goes almost all the way to the property line of the properties on the west side in Pittsfield. But it has much, much less in terms of impact on the east side. And the third alternative would be to try and maintain, to have the 10-foot shared-use path on the west side, but to try and maintain some sidewalk on the east side. Now, no matter what alternative of these three that we choose, it's probably not going to be feasible for us... to be feasible for us to have a sidewalk on the entire, for the entire length of the roadway on the east side. There's just too many obstacles to be overcome in terms of slope impacts, private property impacts, wetlands impacts, culvers that need to be extended that would have to be accommodated in the design. So one of the other things that we have to do as part of this process with Mass DOT is whenever we can't meet one of their standards like this, in this case to have pedestrian facilities on both sides of the roadway, we have to, we have to apply to them for a design exception. And so they have to make a decision as to whether we can make the case for meeting their criteria that it's really infeasible, which I think we can do in this case, as we've done before, especially in terms of environmental impacts, which certainly have a lot of weight in this decision-making. So those are our three alternatives. As far as our recommendation, I think the second one that has the shared-use path on the west side and no pedestrian facility on the east side, the other thing that having a sidewalk on the east side will do is it'll require us to have a curb on that side, which means that we're going to have to manage the stormwater runoff and put it into an underground system and then have it outfall at some point along the roadway, which is going to increase the, again, increase the, kind of the discharge of the stormwater into the wetland resource areas, which will require further mitigation to kind of improve the quality and remove pollutants from that runoff. So again, increases the complexity, cost, and difficulty of that alternative. And so what, if we eliminate the sidewalk from the east side, we can eliminate the curb from that side, and then we can have essentially what there is now, which is what is country drainage, where it just runs off into the shoulder. And there may be opportunities for us to treat that runoff in swales or other types of water quality facilities along the roadway, but is going to be a much, a much easier solution from that standpoint. So really, that's where we are at this point. We have a kind of a preliminary conceptual design memo that's going to be submitted to Mass DOT. As I said, we're into the ICE stage two process already. We have also submitted a draft of the Design Justification Workbook, which is where we talk about these exceptions that we need from the DOT's requirements and criteria, so they can make a judgment as to whether they're going to allow us to do that or not. Next steps would be to have the public information meeting. And at this point, we're still in what's called the pre-25% stage, where we're developing our preferred design to be advanced. And so that's where we're at in terms of soliciting public input and developing what our preferred alternative is that we're going to move forward with.
When would be your next meeting?
Sorry, I just wanted to point out one more thing, which is that this project is on the Regional Transportation Program, which is where the state and federal funding gets allocated. The region gets a certain amount of funding assigned to it each year that is used for transportation projects. And each project gets fit into a certain fiscal year to be advertised for construction. This project is currently in the fiscal year '29 tip. So there's still quite a bit of time, and that's why DOT is not pressing us to kind of get going with this. We do have plenty of time to work out these details for fiscal year '29 advertisement.
When would be your next meeting for public input, Steve?
We'd have to schedule it. I would guess it would be sometime after the first of the year at this point.
Steve, earlier you said you were going to have, there was going to be public input from the Pittsfield stakeholders. I'm sure Dalton would be invited, correct?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah. There would be nobody excluded. It's just that Mass DOT made a point of recommending that we invite the butters and officials from Pittsfield as well. And the fact is that half of the intersection of William Street and Dalton Division Road is actually in Pittsfield as well. So they have, they have some stake in the outcome of this project.
So there's no decision to be made tonight? This is just to give us some information, correct?
Absolutely.
You happy with the plan?
I guess, I mean, there's going to be a public, sorry, answer such, but he was talking about there's already a three-way option, which would be keeping the same, whether it's a three-way.
One was with the stoplight, or stoplights. One was keeping it the same, little spruced up. And the third was the roundabout.
Right, but I think he's mentioned the same way it was now, was it three ways?
Two ways.
Two ways?
Two ways, two stops.
Right, because it's not two now.
Well, that's what they call it. Just to differentiate. And as far as your property goes, Steve, you still here?
I am still here.
Okay. We have some representatives or owners of Dr. Leahy's landscaping business, which is at the north end of the Burgner property, or former Burgner property. And I think everything you've indicated so far with land-taking does not encroach upon their property.
It's probably, it's probably... I'm not sure where that, where that line is.
It's to the north of the main building there with the donut place and the golf place.
Let me just look at this. I think the only part that might be encroached, which is up for further discussion at some point, was if they did the sidewalk, which seems to be leaning, possibly not.
Yeah, it's up in the area.
That that would be impacted possibly by our collective entrances and our signage, which obviously would be worked out at some point going forward. So that would be, at this point, I guess, my only questions or concerns. And once we have this open meeting, we can see where that lands, I guess.
Yes, and that's, this is, this is just kind of the initial stage of that public outreach process. Once we get to the 25% design stage, there will be a formal design public hearing. And that's when we'll have a better idea of exactly what the private property impacts of the project will be. And certainly, any concerns that any of the butters have will be, and that's a meeting that's actually conducted by Mass DOT, and they have their own representatives and staffs at that meeting, so that any concerns of butters can be raised directly with them. And then we will have to formally respond to any comments that are raised at that meeting. The actual acquisition process itself is a negotiated process. There's, you know, if fee takings are required, they're required to offer the fair market value of the property. There are assessments that take place. And so all of this will happen with full knowledge of any of the butters that will be impacted.
Okay. Any further questions?
Yeah, I just have, I actually have several, but I'll save those for the public hearing. Do we know if Pittsfield is going to be encouraged to be at that meeting? In other words, an invitation sent to the mayor's office?
I think we can do that, yes. We have a very good working relationship with the city, so...
The reason I raise that is when we first started working on the Dalton Division Road project back quite some time ago, we did meet, say, we sat with the mayor's office, and the mayor sent a representative that was ill-informed and wasn't very helpful with moving the process forward. I do feel this, the presently seated mayor would be more than glad to work with us. We want to make sure that the mayor and the city of Pittsfield is involved in this.
Now, is the mayor favorite of this, Pete, what's his name? Okay. As does Mr., he's on the MPO with me, that is Director of Public Works. He's very, very much in favor of it. And just throw this in, we're talking about the MPO and the tip and all that, where all these decisions are made financially, that they did a study, the MPO did a study on dangerous intersections in Berkshire County. And this one at Dalton Division Road was in the top five. Because of the, yeah, because of the potential for a head-on collision with a car coming off of William Street and cutting across a car trying to turn up. And where we look out here, there's never been a disaster there, is because it's all local traffic. And they know the, most people know that you got to edge your way out there and so forth. You know even better because you're there every day. And so...
Well, the car that ran into the house, went straight through, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Well, they blamed it on the fog and all this other BS. Yeah, I forgot that was...
This has been dangerous forever, is I guess the point.
Can we ask Bud if he's got any thoughts on this?
Yeah. I think just the same thing here, you know, just learning about what's going to be the option, right? And move forward for that. Anything's going to be improved before it is...
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, it is. It's a disaster waiting to happen.
All right. We're good?
We haven't had a fickle. I'd be surprised.
That's what they pointed out in their survey, cars coming from off of William Street, cutting across in front of the car to try to turn on Washington on the road, looking for a disaster to happen.
Thank you, Steve.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you, Steve.
Okay, you know, you can make your wishes known through the town manager as to who we should be inviting to this, to the public meeting, and you'll certainly be informed as to when that is.
All right, he's writing it down right now.
Yeah. You should ask that, there's two councilmen whose districts abut Dalton Division Road. They should both be invited.
Okay. All right, very good. Thank you very much, we'll be in touch.
Number 10, petition for a special election.
As we all know, there's been a resignation on the select board, and the town clerk received a petition and certified over 200 signatures. You have a copy of that in your folders. And in the event that this happens, the Mass General Law says the select board shall call a special election. You also have something that was not sent out to you earlier, but we did get from the town clerk. I'll mention, I did meet with the select board chair and vice chair and town clerk to talk about what a process might look like. And the town clerk was anxious not to have anything happen too early in January, because that's a time when the census has to be done, and that also involves people's renewal of their dog licenses. So she had suggested a date of, that it happened certainly no earlier than Monday, January 27. And then there are other ways she's going to be busy after that, so that seemed to be the optimum date for it. So you have a timeline of all of the required actions with that as the baseline, just to give you an idea of what any decision would involve.
Tom, I have to take issue with you on your first point. As you all know, there's a vacancy on the select board. Actually, the select board does not know that, because we have never received a certified document saying there is a vacancy on the select board due to such-and-such member resigning. We've never seen a letter of resignation either. We should have saw all that material. In fact, it's required, let's see here, no. I gotta find this. Oh, here. If there's a resignation of a town officer creating a vacancy at some time certain, and if such resignation is filed with the town clerk in accordance with the provisions in section 109, said town clerk shall certify a vacancy shall occur at the later time certain, and the board of selectmen may call a special election. I'm certain it all happened, but we were never, as the select board, notified or saw this documentation or resignation.
I can make sure that happens.
And while we're at it, as I, remember you asked me, I told you I had several legal questions about the process that's been taking place? In addition, that was in chapter 41, subsection 10, just for the record. In chapter 40, subsection, okay, here. If there's a failure to elect, a vacancy occurs in the office of selectmen, the remaining selectman or selectmen may call a special election to fill the vacancy, or shall call such election upon the request in writing of 200 registered voters in town, or 20%, whichever is lower, right? That such request is filed with them, them being the select board. And this never happened either. So in my opinion, everything up until this point is of questionable legality. And that's why at the meeting in December, or I mean in September, I suggested that we consult with the town attorney before we do anything, based on what's happened here. I mean, what could happen is you ignore these chapters and subchapters in the Massachusetts General Law, and go and call an election without actually following all the steps. The election could be contested by a citizen in court and ruled invalid. I noticed there's a petition, and the first time I've seen it, interesting. I take it this is here? We ought to take some time to review that, too? For Mr. Chairman, I would move that all these things I said be looked into, town manager's issue, the issue with the attorneys, and the timing, and we postpone any action till all those issues have been resolved, and postpone it till, I'd say, the first meeting in January.
I'll second that.
Okay, and most have been made and seconded. I totally agree with you, John. All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Okay.
Maybe we could set up a Zoom meeting with Zeston or something. I mean, he's a busy man, he ain't going to drive out here for that.
Yeah, no, we'll get it.
Oh, you could, if we wanted to.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, number 11. Upper update in recessions. Okay, number 11. ARPA update and recessions.
You have two items in the folder about this. The first is a summary of the actions as of the middle of October. And the second is also new. I just created that document today, mostly this afternoon, that flushes out a little bit what's on the agenda. I'd like to request three rescissions and at least one action. I'll notice that on here you'll see two references to a fire warden brush truck. That is an error. That was the, the last time this came around, there was a suggestion that the town and the fire district split a brush truck, the cost of a brush truck through ARPA. The current request is for an insert into a truck that would function much like a brush truck would. And that request is for $20,000. So some discussion on that potential item, which came in since your last meeting, would be helpful. I also show what the balance is based on what's remaining from previous allocations not being fully spent. I list three new requests, and then another balance, which could be used for the, for a truck insert, so that it could be used as a brush truck. And that figure is now, $20,000 is the request. And we would have $23,000 left over after all of those actions were taken. So first, I would ask that the select board rescind three items. I'll mention that both this and reallocation are from the emergency management. There was, there were two items for which the select board allocated ARPA funds. One was the community emergency response team, and one was a scanner. That's a radio scanner. The community emergency response team amount was underspent, and the scanner cost more than had been allocated. So those two items are meant to address that. They've satisfied their, their community emergency response team spending needs, but they need a little bit more money for the scanner. So those are, those are the first, those are really the, the action items. And then there's, or at least in the beginning, then there are the new requests and the request from the Dalton Fire District for a truck insert for brush fires.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the following rescissions in the total of $36,468. $32,200 from the Town Hall Police Department Basement Renovation, $4,175 from $5,000 Town Hall Basement Asbestos Removal, and $2568 from $415.17 remainder of allocation to Emergency Management SER.
Second?
Well, just a split second. Mark, you said originally $36,400?
Yes.
You, you left out the 68 cents.
68 cents.
Yeah, a little like, 'cause a buck came down the road someday looking for 68 cents. Second, yeah?
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to re-designate $389.49 from prior emergency management allocation for SER for a scanner, to a scanner.
Second?
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Tom, on this brush truck here, how much is the fire district putting in?
I don't know that they are proposing to put anything in. Just one second, I have it here. Presumably, they would be putting in the truck. Whether that's an existing truck or not, I don't know.
Tom, what was, you said the original request was for a new truck? Was it $42,000?
Yes, that was for.
So now they only want 20 to insert this thing into the truck to make it into what they want? Sounds like a good deal to me.
Yeah, this is, this is considerably less. They had asked for ARPA funding in the amount of $20,000. The actual quote for the unit that they're requesting is $16,365. So they may want associated equipment.
Stallings.
For, for brush fighting, for the remainder of the $3,060.
But I reiterate, originally, they asked for $42,000.
Correct.
For a new truck.
Yes.
Now they're only asking for 16 plus 4.
They're asking for $20,000. The unit itself costs $16,365.
Is that a motion, John?
Mark, do you want it?
I'll make a motion to approve $20,000 for the brush truck. Considering everything that's going on right now. Not that we're going to be able to use it right away, but.
Yeah, oil and smokes, yeah.
Didn't they just have a big brush fire in Pittsfield?
Yes, they did. Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? You'll communicate that to the fire department, Tom?
Yes, there, there are also.
Just do me a favor, Tom. Tell them nobody in New York State's doing the work.
Yeah. Yes.
Yes. New requests that have come in include approximately $10,000 for a plow. The quote we have is for $9,895, or $105 short of that. The estimate was from back in August. I think approving $10,000 for now would cover that if there were any price increases since August, and I can get back to you with any leftover amount.
Okay.
And that's for a, a new snowplow with lights and the associated equipment snowplows have.
Tom, just the type you had, what we have for a balance now, we have to spend this $20,000 in the ARPA funds.
So $20,000 after the balance that's listed on the sheet is $36,400.
And that includes the rescissions we just made, our money back in, or never been optimized, never been utilized?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
The, the new requests include that $10,000 for a plow, $3,700 for a printer, a copier printer, or a heavier duty one, and $19,691 for a drone for the police department with associated equipment.
I want to talk on the drone real quick. First time I ever saw a drone being used was Mr. Joe Seen. Remember, we saw each other on Cherry Street, and I stopped there and talked. So we got a drone in Pittsfield about a year ago. I cannot tell you how much of a resource that is, finding lost people. We used it today. We had a mental health crisis. It worked three hours, and we had a drone in progress. Utilizations for those things are unbelievable. So I totally support that.
Motion?
I make a motion to approve $10,000 for a plow, $3,700 for printers, and $19,691 for a police drone.
Take it.
Okay, motion's made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, that leaves us about $3,000. We'll move these requests through, find out what the actuals are on these, and I hope to come back with perhaps just a single final request.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, town manager evaluation. Tom?
As I believe you all know, my contract includes a requirement for an annual evaluation. It's good to do that, obviously, before the budget season starts.
Absolutely.
So I've talked a little bit with the chair about that. I just wanted to bring it up in case anyone had any particular points, but I'm comfortable in working with the chair to have that happen. We do have a policy for town manager evaluations in the town, and it might be good to look that over before the current evaluation.
Yep, let's do that.
Tom, wouldn't it make sense, though, to do it closer to your anniversary date of your contract, which is, I believe in me?
Well, you can do it whenever you like.
Yeah.
The, the question is including it in a proposed budget for my department.
Yeah.
I mean, is there an expense involved in this? I don't remember there ever being one.
No expense, but it can affect us raise.
Oh.
Yes, but the raise depends on the evaluation.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Yes.
Okay, fine, anytime. That's the first year?
I'll work with the chair.
Can you send the policy out for the town manager evaluation to us?
I'm sorry?
Can you send the policy out?
Can you send that out to us?
Yes, to send that to us. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, future agenda items.
Just one thing, Mr. Chairman. Traditionally, at this point in time, we set it scheduled for the holiday season.
Yep.
And traditionally, we only have one meeting in December, and try to place it in mid-December to avoid the Christmas season. And I think there's a Monday on the.
16th.
16th? I would suggest the 16th.
Okay, everybody good with that one?
Yeah.
Okay, that should be on, that's it.
I do have an update.
Okay. Oh, I blew right by that. Go ahead, Tom.
As you heard earlier, I've been trying to move ARPA projects forward and making plans for the remainder of the funds. I believe I can come up with some categories of spending that the select board can approve, and that we can continue to wrap up, to wrap under-budget projects into expenses through December. More or less what I said before. In procurement activity, we received a quote for the Town Hall plumbing upgrade, engineering, preliminary engineering, for $23,000 from Hill Engineering, and will go ahead with that. We also received rebids for the garage roof replacement and accepted one for $146,400 from La Rochelle Construction in West Springfield. The DPW stormwater and employee handbook bids are scheduled to be open tomorrow, and the police station feasibility study on Wednesday, November 20th. We're also making progress on the new website, which we had hoped to be up a couple of months ago. Various delays and holding the contractors strictly to our proposal, fairly strictly to our proposal, have meant a delay in implementation, but I believe the final result will be worth it. Dalton will be recognized at the Green Communities Summit on November 22nd, 2024, for its success at reducing municipal energy use by 20% since our Green Communities baseline year. The summit is being held at Devon's, and I have asked the Green Dalton Commission Committee whether any of them would like to attend on behalf of the town. As we heard earlier, there is another step to prepare the Orchard Road project for bidding. Town Council is in communication with DEP and MDR regarding to permission to rework the existing drainage on the APR protected land. We believe that since it's not a change in use, there is existing drainage there, it should be a relatively straightforward approval.
It is a change in use.
For the conservation agent, I did, I did not believe it was appropriate to propose a new position at a special town meeting, but that meant we allocated the funds to the expense account rather than the salary account. And the only candidate, who's a great candidate, is treated as an employee in the other towns she works for. Therefore, I've asked Richmond, one of the other towns the candidate works in, if they would consider an intermunicipal agreement with Dalton for the rest of FY '25. That would be an allowable expense. I will note that Pleasant Street is now paved, together with the repaving of Sleepy Hollow Drive, Frederick Lane, and Whipperville Drive. That wraps up the major paving work of this construction season. Of course, we look forward to Orchard Road being paved starting April 1st. Regarding land which the town foreclosed on in the past, including the Barden Land, DOR has clarified that the recently passed Chapter 140 of the Acts of 2024, Section 212, includes a limit on retroactive claims, saying that no claim for the return of excess equity may be asserted by any party where a land court judgment of foreclosure was entered and not appealed on or before May 24th, 2021. I have asked the assessors to calculate how much it would cost the town to adopt the, this is finally, I have asked the assessors to calculate how much it would cost the town to adopt the provisions of the HERO Act, which include raising the tax exemption level for real estate for disabled veterans. I'll have information on that for you to consider for a town meeting vote. And that's my.
Tom, it's not just disabled veterans. There's different levels of disabled veterans. I think you have to meet a certain criteria, like 40%, 50%, or higher. There's a lot of provisions in that HERO's Act, and you know, we talked about that. I think the assessors have a copy of it. Hey, one question I want to ask. A lot of citizens have been asking me, what's the progress or non-progress on the Warren land, the Warren property solar project?
The Citizens Energy is in communication with Eversource regarding easement issues. That seems to be their last hurdle before going forward. They are.
They're still committed?
Ready to pay the Town Hall the back taxes and fees. But they, they need to have that in place before they can finalize their financing.
We gave them, didn't we give them an easement?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so that's all set. So now they're trying to get easements from who?
Eversource.
Okay. Sounds good.
Thank you, Tom. Any questions for Tom?
Do you have a question?
Yes.
I'm just curious who and who we already was talking to with regards to the easement and the change of use. Because I spoke with them today, and they said they have no contact from the town. And they asked me to reach out because they said they have no response.
Well, they've been in contact with Town Council, certainly. I got an email from Sean someone today, which I replied to.
They told me that they do see it as a change of use, so just heads up on that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right. Any other future agenda items? Items not anticipated 48 hours before the meeting.
May I, Bob? I just kind of wanted to touch on the fire district's notice of our drinking water. And I just wondered how many people it affected. I know that I got a letter. It's sort of the severity of it, if anybody was talking about it, because there's possible lead in our drinking water. lead in our drinking water?
Yeah, my understanding is that is a result of a new rule from the Environmental Protection Agency at the federal level to ensure that there, there's no lead in anybody's drinking water. Going forward, there's, there's additional regulations regarding that, and the water district has sent out letters, and I got, I got one of those as well, that says you may have lead pipes. They will be conducting surveys to find out what the extent of the issue is.
So if they determine that a citizen or homeowner has lead pipe in their service, they're going to notify the homeowner?
I have a letter, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's unclear to me where the water district actions have, where the limits of the water district actions are and what's required of the homeowner. But I believe there will be lead testing involved-
Right.
-in various places throughout town, based on when water pipes were put in, probably.
But the, the water district is responsible, called, this is called a service, from the water main to your lawn. And then the homeowner is responsible from the front of your lawn, basically, to your, usually basement. So it could be a water district problem and it could be a homeowner's problem, depending on the, Bill, Mr. Chairman, Bill wants to-
I believe the, the water lines from the main to the curb stop-
Yep.
Is, of course, the water district-
Right.
From the curb stop to the house, homeowners. And generally, what they're looking for, I know more about this than I dare admit, is that they wanna verify copper, that you have a copper service in your house. I believe they're asking for pictures if you can. That's what we have on, on small water systems. And that's what they require from us, the DEP look. So that it's not, they're not saying that we have lead pipes. What they're asking for is to verify, they wanna verify all of this information so that we can know where to test and where to look. I think there are private, we delineate pipes, we probably have lead as well, so that's probably their own system.
I think-
So is it necessary to go out and buy like our own water test, would you say?
You can, there's, many homes actually have lead soldering, some of the older, the older houses have lead soldering joints. Generally, you might get a small amount, it'll show up, extremely small amount. You should, if you want, you certainly can, you can actually go test the joints in the, in the copper joints. There, there are tests, I believe, from Depot and Rose and, and all these, there are all the various hardware stores do sell this, the lead test. I would suggest that if you have a concern for lead, I would suggest this from them. Water department will test your house before you go in there. That's on- Yeah, yeah, we, my water system, we don't, because we know, we kinda know what's in our water system, we know what, right? So we have the test at the well, and then we have two taps in the system.
Hello, Fanday?
Yes.
Someone knocked on my door and asked to come look at my pipes.
Really?
And came in my house, went downstairs and-
Were they from the water district?
Yes.
It was, I think it was like a third-party person through the water department, not like someone who-
Okay, yeah, make sure they have a dedication, yeah.
And they solicited to do this, and she knocked on the door and she had like a lanyard with a-
Yeah, make sure they got a dedication, for sure.
Yeah.
And I went, hmm, at first, and then I followed her down my stairs and was on her hip, and then she, I don't know, it almost looked like she put a coin or some sort of thing, it was probably a magnet on the pipes, and kinda went, looks good here, and back up the stairs she went, and then I do believe I got some kind of letter about it, but-
Yeah, it tells you just like how to handle, like if there's something-
Yeah, so I don't know if this was something that was done through the water district or sending these.
Pretty much have to be.
Cause I know we got a letter about, you can test it yourself, and if you don't, then somebody can-
Yeah, it talked about the health effects.
Um, so-
Yeah, like Bob said, you gotta be really cautious.
Yeah.
In general, let people in your house like that.
Well, yeah, trust me, I was-
Big scams.
If I was-
Police Department or Fire Department or somebody else.
Or something, I would've told her no, but it wasn't.
Ever heard of anything else, anybody else that happened to in our neighborhood?
That makes me feel good, yeah.
Oh, well.
Cause you live around the corner, yeah.
Yeah.
But I don't remember what they, it was or whatever, and like I said, I didn't just go, wow, it is nice. Literally was on her hip and brought it to the water main, and she did some fancy stuff, and whether it was legit or not, I don't really know, but-
Water department just did a bunch of curb stop inspections with tiny mop in town.
Okay, so maybe that's-
Testing from lead pipes, from the curb stop to the house, to see if that's-
Cause she went down to like where my main water shut off was, and there's still, there's the main pipe that comes this way and then the one that goes obviously out to your street, you know, and she did something on that pipe and-
Okay.
Had to assess it, but it was above my, my ability to say.
Hey, you could call the water district and ask them if they're sending people out to do that. I would, double check that.
Yeah.
Okay, let's move on.
Thank you.
Remarks of the select board. John, you want to say anything about the V, the vets luncheon?
Oh, yeah, Mark and I went to the veterans dinner, breakfast, luncheon, excuse me, and flag raising ceremony, and a special added attraction this year, they had an Elvis impersonator. And I don't know, mixed feelings that, yeah, both, a lot of these veterans are, have issues, you know, getting old, everybody's getting old, but it seemed to be a big hit. He just danced around and sang Elvis songs for half hour.
John thought it was really Elvis.
Yeah, could've been, wasn't he? Yeah, he's only, yeah. So it was a big success, and I think, think, I think Baintier, Mark, is that right? Baintier, the-
Yeah, they did the meal.
Yeah, they paid for the meal and all the fixings and that. It was a great event, they had a very large turnout this time.
Very large.
Yeah. And the flag ceremony went well. It was in honor of Pete Morrissey, and probably you know him as your local mailman on South Street. And, yeah, it went real well. Thanks for mentioning that.
Okay, anything else? All right, leads to the announcements. To know more about what's happening in Dalton, sign up for the monthly newsletter, Paper Town News. Please visit the town website for more information. The Dalton Police Department is reminding citizens of Dalton that the winter parking ban, which goes into effect November 15th, 2024, and will be in effect to April 15th, 2025, between the hours of 1:00 AM and 6:00 AM. During this time, there'll be no parking allowed on the streets. There are numerous committees and boards with vacancies. Please see the town website for more information or reach out to the town manager's office. The Dalton Housing Authority has one vacancy on their board. They must be a Dalton resident, please contact Sue Gregory at 684-2493 for more information. The town has contracted with Colonial Power to provide electricity plan for town residents that takes advantage of joining with other communities to have a larger customer base for negotiations, which have resulted in prices lower than current Eversource prices. For more details to opt out or in, please visit the town website or call the town manager's office. The town, Dalton currently has the following job opportunities, the COA van driver, administrative assistant to the health agent, and assistant building and ground superintendent. Please visit the town website or contact the town manager's office at 413-684-6111, extension 202, for more information. Our next meeting of the select board is scheduled to take place on November 25th, 2024, at 7:00 PM at the senior center, or an option for remote participation.
Mr. Chairman, I move we go to executive session in accordance to Mass General Law, 30A, subsection 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining unit. Dalton Police Officer Union will not return to open session.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, Mark?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Bob, yes. Thank you, everyone, and good night, Dalton.